Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Budget Hearings. I'm Erica Strasburger, and for this hearing we'll hear updates from the Department of Parks and Recreation followed by the Parks Tax Trust Fund. And so I'd like to invite the representatives from the Department of Parks and Recreation to join us at the table. And while you're joining us, I'll ask that our Budget Director, Peter McDevitt, give a brief overview.
Thank you, Councilperson. The Department of Parks and Recreation seeks to enrich and enhance the lives of the city of Pittsburgh residents and visitors through a wide array of programs and events that contribute to a safe and welcoming city where all residents thrive. A quick overview, the Department of Parks and Rec is comprised of these main operational areas: recreation programs, senior and wellness programs, community programs, and the aquatics program. A position summary in the 2024 operating budget, there is a total of 53.8 positions in the general fund, that is an increase of 1.8. And just quickly to go over it again, whenever there's a percentage point in there, that's because a portion of those positions is paid out of a separate trust fund. It's not fully allocated in the general fund. In addition to those full-time positions, there is about 1.4 million budgeted for temporary part-time and seasonal positions. Overall, it is a $203,000 decrease from 2023. And then a summary of non-personnel changes, overall, there's $170,000 decrease in non-personnel expenses. There was a $225,000 line item in the 2023 budget as a one-time transfer to the senior trust fund that is not in 2024. And there is also 55,000 additional budgeted for operational supplies. And a quick run-through of the capital budget, the big one for Parks and Rec is the Senior Community Program. There's $1 million from CDBG. And then the Department of Public Works Bureau of Facilities is responsible for facility improvements to the rec and senior centers and park reconstruction. However, these are facilities that Parks and Rec uses, and so we just wanted to run through those. We kind of covered them in DPW, but just to run through, these are capital improvements that kind of touch Parks and Rec. There is $14.7 million in capital improvements for rec and senior center facility upgrades. There's about $3.7 million for sports facility improvements, about $4.8 million for park reconstruction. Park Reconstruction Rad, there's $2.78 million. Play Area Improvements, $1.1 million. And again, $100,000 for the Fowler Pool upgrades. And then a quick run-through of trust funds. We have the Special Events Trust Fund, which is for equipment, supplies, repairs, maintenance, and professional services related to various special events. The Shenley Park Trust Fund, which is for any salary materials, Shenley Park Rink Trust Fund, sorry, any salary materials, repairs, equipment, and other miscellaneous service costs incurred while operating the skating rink. The Regional Asset District or RAD Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, which is for any and all expenses relating to the six regional parks that the city has. The Mellon Park Trust Fund, which is for, it is to supplement the payments of various administrative and operational costs in connection with the improvements to Mellon Park, City Park's indoor tennis program and/or other City Park's indoor tennis facilities park. Parks and Recreation shall at all times set aside reserve funding within this trust fund to provide for the replacement or repair of any and all existing indoor facilities within two years of construction or replacement. Also, the Senior Citizens Program Trust Fund, any and all expense, which is for any and all expenses related to the operation of the Senior Citizens Program. Just a couple more. The Special Food Service Trust Fund, which is for any and all expenses related to the operation of the summer food program. And last but not least, the Frick Park Trust Fund, which is for interest payments in the endowment, which pay for operational and maintenance expenses of Frick Park.
Thank you, Director McDevitt. Now for the Department of Parks and Recreation, please introduce yourselves, including your title, if you have a presentation. Yes?
Hi, everyone. My name is Catherine Vargas. I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation for the city of Pittsburgh.
And also, am I able to share my screen at this time? Okay.
Hello, everyone. Luanne Haran, Assistant Director, Senior Program and Admin for the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Give me one second. Well, thank you, Council, for having us here today to talk about our budget for 2024. There's a lot of things that we're excited about. We want to take a moment just to talk about this year, some of the great things that have occurred and what we're looking forward to 2024. I first want to also thank you, Councilperson Strasburger, for being our chair this year. It's been great just having you. You've been very proactive as a partner with us in this work, so we sincerely appreciate it.
And just to kind of review, you know, our mission is tied to the ambition of the city, which is to make sure that the things that we're providing are contributing to the safety, the welcoming presence in the city, and also contributes to making sure every resident can thrive. And we do this through a whole host of programming that are geared towards the city at large and also visitors. You know, people come to visit our parks and our work, but also with an eye specifically towards supporting kids and families and older adults. This is our org chart, just to kind of show how our team is made up and where we are focused. We have annually just over 150 employees, and that goes up incredibly in the summertime. We have our pools open. We bring on at least another 200 or so, and so our department really grows in the summertime. But you can see here the core areas of our work and how we are organized. And to go into that a little bit more deeply, we have a number of assets across the city that we manage, so that's our rec centers, our senior centers, and also special assets like our Mellon tennis bubble, our ice rink, our tennis courts, we help to program those, pickleball, a growing piece of that work, and also our pools and spray parks. And I know Pete just did a great job going through these, but just so you can see all the places in which we receive funding to do our work. And so we're going to go over a couple of things that we wanted to highlight from 2023, and I'll let Lou talk about the senior program first.
So thank you for having us today, and we appreciate all your assistance that you give us and welcome us when we come to the table. It's so appreciated. I know the employees appreciate it as well. They're the ones that are out there doing the work. Catherine and I are the top level, but it's actually our workers that are in parks that are doing the work out there with the youth and the seniors. So I always like to mention them and give them credit for the wonderful job that they do. So to talk about the senior program, so as the slide said, we have 13 senior centers. And as I was here prior, a few weeks ago, I just want to mention our food program, that our meals that we've upgraded for the seniors through Allegheny County. That has been so successful in bringing in more seniors to the centers. Our numbers have increased tremendously. The seniors are really enjoying the meals. It's healthier. It's fresh food, fresh salads. We have soup now, two added soup that's been added to our menu, so people are thrilled with the meals that are being served. I want to share a little bit about some of the programs. There's some pictures of things on the slide, things that we are doing. The first one, there's a fishing program. The second is the rangers in and out in the parks. And we've done tours to the glass blowing center, different programs. I want to let you know that it's exciting. So people in the audience know at our senior centers, we've done a lot of trips. We do a lot of trips that I think many people in the city, seniors, would enjoy if they would come and attend our centers. I just want to mention a few places we've been. We've taken our seniors to the Flight 93 Memorial. We've taken them for a visit to Falling Water. They've been on the Gateway Clipper for an afternoon of entertainment and meals. They had a Neil Diamond impersonator there. All the seniors loved it. It was 50/50, so we paid half and the seniors paid half. We helped compensate for the cost of them going. We take them out to the farms, Genosco Farms, Soragul's Farm, before our farmers markets open, because we always encourage people to come to the city farmers markets, but when they're not open yet, we get them out there so they can spend their farmer's market money that they get. This year, they got $50 to spend. Here's a big thing. I would really like to invite Council to come and visit our senior centers and our seniors. They would love to see you. I just invited the mayor to come out. They love it when he comes out. He just talks to them all, shakes their hands. I'm going to tell you, I think that the president came to visit them because they enjoy visits from, you know, from you. They would enjoy all of you if you could take time to come out and see them and be a part of what they're doing. So in saying that, they're having some Christmas parties. They're having a Santa, a breakfast with Santa, and that would be at Lawrenceville. Santa Claus is coming. And then at Morningside, they're doing the same thing. And that's in partnership with Lawrenceville United and the Morningside Community Group that we're having. We're having right now our, we do a senior program Christmas party at our Marshall Mansion. It's on Tuesday and Thursday of next week. Any of you could please come visit. Please come over. It's from 10 until 2. We provide them lunch. We provide them with entertainment for an hour. We have a woman, I think she's in one of our pictures coming up. She plays electronic violin. She plays with Michael Bublé. She plays Trans-Siberian Orchestra, and she's brought her partner with her this year, and they are singing Christmas carols. And then we provide them with a little gift as the seniors leave. They've been looking forward to this. We started this stuff for COVID, so they were shut in and they weren't together. And so we started just doing a Christmas tea, is how it evolved. And when the word got out, people signed up. We can only have so many seniors attend, and they just love it, love it. So it'd be nice if any of you could come next week and visit. Welcome to have you. Welcome. And just real quick, just real quick, because I know we have more to talk about. Some of the programs we're doing, we have some archery program we do, as I talked about before. We're teaching English at the McGee Rec Center. It's been successful. Homewood has a really robust line dancing class that they have there. We just had a program at Brighton Heights where the group came in and taught them the operating system, taught them Google, and gave them Chromebooks. It was an eight-week course, and they were given the Chromebooks at the end of this. So I just really want to mention all the fun things that we're doing at centers, and we really welcome people to come in. I think at the beginning of the year, we're going to start showcasing our members, and so they can tell their stories, how they got there, so to invite more people to come in and let them know it's a wonderful place for fellowship and doing fun things. So I thank you for listening to me today. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Lou. Yeah, we have seen an increase in membership in the senior program this year, and like Lou said, it's a lot more about making sure people feel connected and have community in their neighborhoods, as we're really lucky to have a great team working on that, on those programs. We also took on special events this year, and we had a really successful year with special events. We had our largest Fourth of July that the city has hosted. Since we've taken on Fourth of July, we brought in a headliner. We also had more sponsorship than we had in the past, so it was a very successful event, and we continue to look at ways to grow what it is we offer by way of our special events team. But that transition has gone smoothly, and we also saw record attendance at our races. So our races, Greenfield Glide, I know you were out there for that. It was our largest Greenfield Glide to date, and so people are really coming back and participating in the activities that we have to offer. On the recreation side, our meals program continues to be strong, both for summer and after school. And you know, we continue to have a robust and always full summer camp, an after-school program at our centers. One thing we did differently this year that I want to call out is that we had two centers that have remained open later in the evening, also serving family-style dinners at Phillips and Ammon Rec Center as part of the mayor's initiative and the council's initiative together to kind of really think about these centers as family resource centers. We've been working with the county to move a partial operation of a diaper bank over to Phillips as part of that, where right now they do have it in Mount Oliver. Bringing it over to Phillips provides another access point that's open later for parents to pick up diapers. And we've been working with the Office of Community Health and Safety. They are now having office hours, open hours, to talk with anyone who needs services at Phillips Rec Center, and we're in the process of having them also at Ammon, with the ultimate goal of having that partnership much, you know, widely across the city. And you know, the office hours of having the availability of a social worker, not just for adults, but even for our kids who might be experiencing things, who might be coming into the space and needing to talk with someone. It's been very well received. We've also been doing monthly events with OCHS. We've been calling them healing nights, so a way of thinking about bringing young people and their parents together in activity to also then have a positive place to talk about, you know, issues or getting connected to resources. So that has gone extremely well. City sports continues to grow every year. I would say this year, we've had like a record growth in the indoor soccer program. So these are just some pictures from the different, you know, sports that we were able to organize. I also want to shout out our partnership with the Pirates. You know, they are an invaluable partner in our baseball and softball programs, both of which remain very strong and continue to grow every year as well. But we truly couldn't do that work without their partnership. They are a big piece of it. As you see here, the championship games get to be played at the Pirates Stadium, and there's nothing more exciting for families than that. I also want to mention, back to city sports, this year we also did, for the first time, one of our center directors, Ebony, out at Warrington Rec Center, was able to organize elementary basketball when elementary basketball was potentially going to be canceled this year. We went ahead and took that on, and we had both rec centers and schools, Pittsburgh Public Schools students and teams working together to have a really successful basketball season that was co-ed, and it was awesome. I also want to talk about aquatics. Of course, our pools are extremely important to the summertime. We were able to open 15 pools this year, and we had just unbelievable attendance across all of our pools. We continue to work with our team to already, we've already launched our recruitment efforts because we want to make sure that we can open more pools this coming season. And then our farmers markets, that was a new project for us as well this year. I wanted to call out some things that we did differently. We extended the season, both by extending into opening day being Mother's Day for Squirrel Hill. We are also extending the Squirrel Hill Market into the winter months this year, so it's not too late. You could still have two weeks at the Squirrel Hill Market. And we did a beer garden on the north side, just really trying to do different things to build community around our farmers markets. We also saw a growth in our city farms program. We were able to work with 37 urban farms in the city. We conducted over 200 soil tests for folks who wanted or were interested in growing in their backyard and, you know, across the city to kind of also talk with them about what it means to have a robust, you know, ability to grow food. We did a number of educational outreach. I think one thing that was pretty cool is that we worked with the Frick Park Clay Tennis Program to have their kids also not just play tennis, but they also did like a community service give back, and they worked on one of the urban gardens with us. And then the last thing I want to mention about food and agriculture, this is like a growing piece of our work, is that this year we worked with everyone to help establish the Food Justice Fund. A couple of budget highlights, so I know Pete ran through them, so I'll be very quick, but we're excited about having a full-time farmers market manager. It absolutely deserves that attention, and I think it's going to be, it's going to transform how we do that work. We also have a Food Justice Fund Coordinator that will be joining the team actually this year. That position just closed. We had about $50,000 in operational supplies for city farms that were added to our budget, and that will help us grow that work tremendously. I think last year, our budget was around $20,000. We were able to do a lot, but we want to really make that a citywide initiative, and having the ability to do so, this will help us a lot. I know we mentioned the senior program, the increase in CDBG funds. That's been really important to us. Our RAD allocations, what we're really excited about there is looking at making the Shenley Ice Rink into a roller skating rink in the summertime, and so we've been able to secure funding to be able to build that up. And then in the Parks Tax, you know, some of the things that are really critical to our operations, the support for aquatics, and also supporting upgrades to the fitness equipment in rec centers and pool lockers and things like that have really changed the way people who are members of our rec centers experience the centers. In 2024, a couple of things that we hope to do, I'll just call out a few. I mentioned the changes at the ice rink. We are also working with the area on aging through a regional and statewide plan for making sure that we are thinking about what senior services look like into the future, and that's been a really great experience. We are implementing a new rec system, a rec data system called Rec Desk in partnership with Department of Public Works. That's going to be transformative. We're very excited about that. We are also continuing to work on our partnership with OCHS and think we've made some good strides. We have some exciting partnerships coming up for our Rec to Tech program. The IMP Department has worked with us to help secure some additional funding so that we can look at what we do with Rec to Tech and start to think about it as how we also look at media exposure for young people. And so this year, we're hoping to create our first media hub up at Phillips Rec Center as a part of that partnership. And then we're also looking forward to just having more outdoor recreational experiences offered in our parks through our increases in RAD funding. And last thing I'll mention is, of course, we're excited for the implementation of the Food Justice Fund, and that's going to be a really important part of our work moving forward. And that is it. Thank you. That's all? Thank you so very much for the presentation. I want to recognize that we've been joined by Councilmember Barb Warwick. And do we have anyone joining online? Okay, so Councilmember Warwick, I wanted to turn it over to you if you have any questions or comments.
Yeah, thanks very much. So yeah, thank you so much for a great year. You've done such an incredible amount of work. It's really fantastic. It's been a pleasure working with you both. Yeah, I guess, I do, yeah, I do have a few questions. I actually asked these earlier at the DPW hearing, but it was about the Rec Desk software and sort of what we can expect in terms of capabilities. In particular, I was wondering about the, well, two things. One would be the, you know, the potential to, for high-use areas like Shenley Park and maybe Mellon, to do online reservations of courts for pickleball and tennis, just to avoid the wait times. And then the other one would be signing up for programming at the, you know, like basketball, because now, at least, I don't know about all the centers, but I know at McGee, you have to like go down, and I know myself, I've missed a number of windows just because I haven't gotten around to like actually going in and stopping by, so.
Yeah, I'll just say that's exactly why we're so excited to have this technology upgrade. We haven't had that capability. All of that will be possible with Rec Desk. You know, we have a team of folks between DPW and Parks and on our end. Sue Lucas has been just really great at helping to manage this so that we are looking at, and when we put this out to bid, we're looking at what are all the ways that we really could use technology? So booking courts is definitely one of them. Right now, for tennis, we do that to a degree. For pickleball, we are interested in doing that, and I'll actually probably look to a lot of council member support as we go and engage the pickleball community to make sure that like, as we transform how we do that, so that it will be more efficient for players, but that also that players welcome that change. We have started to permit pickleball courts, and it's gone well, but we haven't added it to our online system, and we plan to with this new change in technology, and for signing up for programs. It will also help us give better data back to the city about who we are serving. Right now, the system that we use does not give us robust demographic information, so you know, we'd be able to say like, in a very, in a much easier and, you know, it'll have report functions where we could tell you who goes to McGee Rec Center. What is the makeup of McGee Rec Center? Are there certain ages that we're hitting, certain ages that we aren't? And it's just going to be transformative in the way that we understand our work, but also in the way the user experiences us. So we're very excited about that.
Yeah, great, great. And yeah, I'm also looking forward to your ability to use some of the Stop the Violence So this past year, I know, well, we did some satellite services in Lincoln Place with the seniors, and that went well. I'd love to see that expand more so that we, you know, so where we don't actually have centers, right, we can have people going in from the city to either supporting existing programs that are happening in the neighborhoods, whether that's just with people there to help or, you know, material support or whatever. So I guess my question is, at least from where you're, what you're looking at now, I know that we've talked about some after-school support and maybe adding some flag football options. Is the, are the funds that you are looking to receive for 2024, is that going to get you where you need to go? Because there is more money in there. That's why I'm wondering, so.
Well, yeah, and I'll say first, I also, I want to thank everyone for the consideration of Parks and Recreation to be able to utilize Stop the Violence Fund resources. Actually, watching Council yesterday, it was like really great to hear everyone's perspective on that. I truly do believe that our work is part of making sure that young people have a productive place to be and things, robust activities to be part of. And that was also, you know, so it's new for us. I think what we're charged to do between now and the new year is to think about those things, put together a plan for how we could utilize those funds to do exactly that. What does it look like to amplify our ability to have engaging activities like flag football, support these sports organizations, and even thinking, you know, about that for supporting more women in sports too, is something that we've been talking about, and extending the hours of our rec centers. We've been able to pilot that with our resources, and I think that extension is both the hours of our current centers, but then also our presence in the community. So to your point, being able to recognize where we have gaps. And just, I also want to mention, our partnership with OCHS has been wonderful this year, and I think growing that is a part of this as well. And, you know, we've been able to do that so far without a lot of resources, but I think that we could really amplify what that looks like and transform sort of what it looks like to be in a rec center with this support. So, you know, I know when I saw that the vote happen, you know, one of the first things that I've been thinking about is like, I want to put together a solid plan of what that could look like for the new year, and I think it's really with the ultimate goal of making sure that any resources from Stop the Violence is focused on what it means to get young people more involved and kind of build our work, you know, to a point where we are doing more of it, and that would mean extending where we are present and also extending like how late we are present and how we are present. So I'm excited about it, so I want to thank Council for that.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm excited too. I hadn't, I didn't know about the healing nights that you do with OCHS. I think that's great. But then, yeah, to be able to do those, not necessarily just at the rec centers, but you know, in whatever facility the kids are at. And another thought I had just with regards to the young people is, you know, also with a lot of the workforce development stuff, you know, the Partner for Work, you know, it's notoriously hard to get kids in a space together and get the information to them. And of course, if you all have these kids or working with the kids, you know, that's another place to connect, right? In addition to OCHS, but you know, another area to connect and get that information to kids and get them signed up for all kinds of programs that are available to them. Yeah, I don't think I have anything else. You know, expanding city farms sounds great. I've, you know, I'd love I've, you know, I'd love to talk about that more. And also, yeah, thank you for getting the pools open. That was huge. I know for the 31st ward, it was, you know, they were very, very happy to have their pool open. Even if it was just part-time, they were happy for that. So, yeah, I appreciate it. Anyway, thank you so much for everything that you do and, yeah. I'd quadruple your budget if we could.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Warwick. We've been joined by Council President Teresa Kael Smith. Council President, do you have some questions?
Thank you, I do just have a few. Thank you so much for chairing this meeting, this hearing too, Councilwoman Strasburg. Director, thank you and your team for all the amazing things they do. I think that we cannot say enough nice things about them. I did mention to you that I'm going to increase salaries for one of your staff members who has taken on additional responsibilities. And I do want to say how much I like the concerts on the weekends and the areas that you have or places that aren't the typical areas where you see things happening. So I appreciate that, that your team is thinking outside the box a little bit there. But I also have been talking to everyone about, you know, Townsend Park in Elliot was a park that we spent over a million dollars renovating because the road needed reconstruction, the wall needed reconstructed, just to save this playground. And we did the work, and it's only been like maybe two, three years since it's been done, completed. And since then, DPW had to replace all the equipment because it has been destroyed over time. And part of that is, when I go over there, there's a lot of kids that are there with absolutely no supervision, no structure. And you want a playground to be free and, you know, fun-loving and all this stuff. But sometimes it's nice to have somebody doing like a craft there with the kids or a kickball game or a basketball game or something just to, you know, someone just to be there to show that they care about the kids or bring some water or something. So I'm wondering if there's, if you have the staff or if there's a willingness to partner with maybe the aviary or the children's museums or museum or the zoo, something to maybe bring those kinds of activities to the community, right directly to the kids and partnerships in places that they don't typically have those kinds of things. And maybe you could do that in 2024. Could you talk about that a lot?
Yeah, sure. Well, in one way that we do that currently is through the Arc Heart, which I know can't be everywhere, I mean, our capacity right now. You know, we get the Arc Heart out there at least two days a week for every week in the summertime, and we do our best to try to spread the wealth there in terms of where we can be located. But yeah, I think that, again, in the spirit of expanding where we're present and to the concept of not only having staff tied to our buildings, that that would be something that, you know, looking at what resources we are getting, we might be able to build our capacity to do that. There's also a model in Philadelphia that I have been looking at that leverages Learn and Earn, their version of Learn and Earn students to serve as play captains in places where kids naturally are. And I am interested in doing that in 2024 and have talked with, you know, folks on our team who work with Partner for Work on what it might look like to, you know, pilot having some young people who have, you know, maybe one adult leader who works with them to train them in being present at parks as part of their summer employment. So that is, so yes, have been looking at that. It's certainly been something that we're aware of and feel similarly to you that it only is more robust of an experience for young people to have some structure around play, even if it's light structure.
Right. I love that idea, and I also like the idea of bringing things like the aviary, like the children's museum, the zoo, those kinds of things directly to the kids and to the communities where, you know, a lot of times our families can't get up. I just saw somebody posted that they wanted to give free passes to the children's museum away. And the response they got for only four passes was like tremendous. And I thought, that's because the kids don't get to see those things every day. And it'd be nice if they had some exhibit or something, you know, special that they could bring out to the parks where, you know, kids, maybe there's not a swimming pool or maybe it's not a rat park, but it's something where you can reach kids that would love to see those things that they don't typically get a chance to see. And even if they get a chance to see them, they might want to see them again. So I would love to see those kinds of partnerships expanded. The other thing I do want to say is how grateful I am for the city parks, you know, Maureen and Pat Fries and Julie, they all run great centers, but the West End Center is still closed. And I should have asked Director Hornstein this, but do you have any update on that?
Yes, and yeah, we are, we're also very sad that that rec center is closed, but we had to close it for safety reasons. I even went down there myself to smell what was happening in the building and after 20 minutes, I had to leave. The good news is, is that the cause has been identified. And that was the trickiest part of the whole thing was that when something, there's like a stench and it's impossible to identify, the DPW team, to their credit, and thank you, Chris and your team, for really working at this, had to go through a lot of different processes to finally identify where it was coming from. So there is movement now on a contract to get rid of that smell, and I anticipate that the center would be, yes. And then as soon as it's safe to be in there, we will absolutely be reopening. And we're hopeful that that's going to happen, like, you know, early-ish in the new year.
Okay, great. That's good. The seniors ask, it's the question they ask me most about, no matter where I am. I can't, I'm surprised how much they miss that center. So thank you very much for that. And that's it for me. Thank you for all your work. I think that your team and the senior centers do an amazing job, especially, as I mentioned, you know, Pat Fries and Julie and Maureen. They're just amazing. They're parts of that community and, you know, they, they're just, without them, a lot of things would not happen. They open those centers to community groups, to activities for the area. So they, their partners are making great things happen in the neighborhood. So thank you for that. And thank you for all the work. We appreciate the Arc Heart, we coming to so many events and just in general, just appreciate all that. I wish that your budget was much bigger, so thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate your questions. I just have a few questions and a few comments. And I really also appreciate all the programs and all the work that you do. Some of it's, you know, visible, a lot of, like, a lot of it's visible compared to a lot of the other departments we have in the city, which is great, but a lot of it's also invisible. So I appreciate the invisible work as well. I think it's a great idea to get more council members out to the senior centers and the rec centers to the extent that we're allowed to interact with children. But if you, Luanne, wouldn't mind sending either City Clerk or me, and I can get it out to the rest of council, the upcoming holiday parties for next week and the week after, we'll get it out and make sure that people know about it. So just on our calendar. It's a very busy time of year for all of us.
Right.
But I agree, you know, I'd love to get to the Marshall Mansion and maybe bring some people with me if I could. And I'm sure others would like to in their districts or elsewhere. And maybe in the new year, as things are a little bit quieter in January, February, it's also an opportunity to get out and that's a good time. That's when I set all my meetings for is January because we have a little bit more time in our schedule.
Sure.
So that'd be great. Yeah.
I'm glad you know of everything, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'd love to meet some of them. And then the second thing on the council president's idea, I also know just from sitting through as a public trustee for a couple of different civic and cultural institutions, right? You know, by virtue of sitting on city council, I sit on the Carnegie Museums Board, thanks to council president's nomination and the Carnegie Library. But I know that there are a lot of cultural and civic institutions that are seeking ways to get more outside of the walls of their museums or their buildings. And it seems like it's a perfect connection point. I know we have connected with some, but if they're seeking those opportunities but don't know the best ways to fill in the gaps and not be duplicative, and you have the places for them, I know that they have. Have you ever presented their monthly breakfast before? Or invited to speak?
I have not, no.
Okay. Those heads of those institutions, I think it's like 30 of them, have a monthly breakfast. It's Children's Museum, it's History Center, it's Carnegie Museums, it's Library. And maybe just getting in front of them in one fell swoop would be, I think they would like swarm you at the end of that and say, we have ideas. We have ways that we can get to and get to the right centers or the right rec centers, so.
Absolutely, that would be great.
Okay, great. So let's work on that in 2024 too.
I also do want to mention, since you brought up the library, because I'd be remiss not to mention it, we are looking at some really exciting partnership with the libraries in 2024.
Great.
That will involve their presence more heavily in our rec centers, but also in the parks. And through special events, we have also developed a really great relationship with the Carnegie Museum of Art that we're looking to extend from, right now, they helped with the Gingerbread House project this year and actually came out and curated and did their own category voting. But then also having them be present at some of our events. So I love that idea. I definitely welcome the opportunity to speak with that group of people.
Wonderful. We'll get that on the books. I'll make the request. I don't actually have the control, but I'll make the request and see what happens. I'm very glad to see the additional farmer's market coordinator, I think just, even if there's no like additional work that comes out of it, taking work away from you and from others that where you're, you know, spending a lot of time to free up work for, you know, time for you to do other work or have a Sunday off is also wonderful to hear. And I just had a couple of questions that maybe you can help me understand. I see that cleaning, the cleaning budget was pretty small, but it goes down to zero? Or it's down to zero this year and next year? Is that moved somewhere else?
Yes, DPW handles the cleaning.
Got it, okay. And then same with, there's an addition of, there was an addition of landscaping in this budget? Is that city, is that the farms or is that something else?
No, that actually, I believe there were some smaller like landscaping-ish things that we do around like the ice rink, where like they'll take care of like right around the rink property. There's also around some of the senior buildings in the spray parks. So we also do still kind of play a role in like the, I don't want to say maintenance, but like the upkeep of the spray park areas and that fits there.
Great. Lastly, I'll just say that I know that we talk about parks and recreation as, in terms of one prong of a multi-pronged strategy around violence abatement and anti-violence efforts. And that's definitely true. I mean, I'm so very glad that we're moving forward legislation to add some of the Stop the Violence funds into this department. I think, you know, the more that we can do as a city, the better. And your department is so fabulous at that and knows exactly where to deploy it. And I'll be looking forward to seeing that plan. But I also just want to mention, I think it's part of a public health, it's part of our public health plan as well. We don't have a public health department, but like this is as close as it gets in some ways with your coordination with OCHS and obviously outdoor recreation, indoor recreation. But also, I mean, I keep thinking back to, as long as he's been saying it, our Surgeon General talking about loneliness as an epidemic and as dangerous for your health as smoking 15 cigarettes a day is like a big deal. And this is the department that brings people together, whether it's seniors and making sure they're getting out and interacting. But like, people of all ages can experience loneliness. And it's so important to have places in every neighborhood for them to, for people to gather and just be together. We learned that in the pandemic and how important that is. So really grateful for all those reasons, for the work that you do. And to your employees, please extend our thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Councilwoman, can I just ask one more question?
Absolutely. I was going to open it up, so please, Council President.
Thank you, I'm sorry. I just want to ask briefly, the farmer's markets. We had one in Sheridan, and that's actually how we started the Farmer Go Ed program with Ebony Lunsford. But we don't have anything in all District Two from the city of Pittsburgh for a farmer's market. And actually, Mount Washington and Duquesne Heights, they ask for it all the time. So is there any opportunity or would you consider some opportunity to open a farmer's market up anywhere in District Two? But especially looking at that area first?
Yeah, I definitely would welcome the conversation around that for sure. And I think we would have the capacity, having a full-time person, to be able to look at what growth looks like into that area. And we'd want to work with partners up there. So maybe I can reach out to your office just to make sure that whatever it is we do there like matches what is expected. You know, in this first season, maybe it's try, you know, piloting it, seeing, you know, the interesting thing about a farmer's market is it, you know, the vendors also have to be excited and feel that it'll be profitable to them. So what we found is that being able to kind of do like a proof of concept then leads into like that sustainable, long-term relationship with the community around a farmer's market. So, yeah, that would be exciting to explore.
Well, I think for us, it was, they did try it in our district, but we are so, our district orders the most boroughs in the entire city. And so we have boroughs all around us that have amazing farmer's markets. And I don't know if you've ever seen the Green Tree one where they have signage everywhere. They do a lot of promo for it, they have a huge space for it. And so that was taking people, people would just wait until the Green Trees Farmer's Market would happen. So then they weren't attending ours. But I think Mount Washington is somewhat disconnected from that part. And same with Banksville, disconnected from those parts a little bit, where they might be areas that they might be more successful in starting.
Okay, great. Yeah, no, that's great.
Thank you for considering it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Council President Kael Smith. Do you have any other questions as well and any further questions?
No, I don't think so, although I do, that Learn and Earn for the teens at the playgrounds. I just texted someone and they're like, yes, yes, yes. So we'll talk more about that.
Great, great ideas. Wonderful. Well, thank you to you both and to your team and for this presentation. And appreciate you being here today.
And thank you so much again for just being our chair this year. And it's been great working with you.
Likewise, it's been a pleasure.
Diddle.
And we'll see you at the holiday parties.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for being here. We'll excuse you and we'll invite next our representatives here to talk about the Parks Trust Fund. So those from Public Works and Department of Parks, Parks and Recreation to discuss the Parks Tax Trust Fund. And we will roll right into that while Budget Director McDevitt provides us with an overview.
Thank you, Councilperson. In November of 2019, voters in the city of Pittsburgh approved a referendum that amended the city of Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter to establish a trust fund to collect funds for the improvement of the city's parks. The Parks Tax shall be funded in part by adding a .5 mils to the real estate tax rate. The Parks Tax Trust Fund may also receive monies and contributions from additional sources. A quick overview, revenues from the .5 mil property tax increase in the city of Pittsburgh property taxes and the expenditures include the improvement, maintenance, the creation and operation of public parks, improving park safety, providing equitable funding for parks in underserved neighborhoods, securing matching funds and services from charitable city parks conservancies subject to city council's authorization. In the 2024 budget, there is a total of 54 full-time positions, which is an increase of 14. There are 37 DPW positions and 17 Parks and Rec positions. Overall, that's an increase of almost $1.5 million. And again, like the other departments, there are PJCBC positions listed in this budget that currently reflect a 0% increase due to their ongoing CBA negotiations. A quick summary of non-personnel changes. Overall, there's a little more than a $7 million decrease in non-personnel expenses, which is due to a smaller capital budget for Parks Tax projects that kind of coincides with, and we started collecting money in 2021, but we didn't start programming it until 2022. So that's just catching up on the money that we've brought in and spending it out the door. And then a quick summary of capital expenses. So we went over these in DPW, but just to go over them again. Sports facilities, there's $1 million for Mazarovsky Field. There's also additional funding for play area improvements for five different parks or playgrounds. West End Playground, Albert Turk Graham Playground, Abel Long Playground, Mutual Playground, Winters Playground. Park reconstruction for Frick, Mellon, McKinley, Valley Refuge Shelter and Westinghouse Park for an archaeology study. And then again, 100 grand for Fowler Pool upgrades. And also, there will be six one-ton dump trucks for the Parks bureaus and a Parks vehicle. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Director McDevitt. Now for the Parks Tax Trust Fund, please introduce yourselves and your title.
Hi, Catherine Vargas, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Chris Hornstein, Director of Public Works.
Don Mudrick, Manager of Personnel and Finance for Public Works.
Thank you. Now, we Thank you. Now, we, we did, took a deep dive into the Parks Tax Trust Fund at a post-agenda hearing not too long ago. Do you have an additional presentation for today? Or are you, are you here to field questions from us?
I'm here to field questions. No additional presentation.
Okay, very good. Thank you. With that, do we still have Council President? Okay, no longer Council President. So, you know, we, we clearly went, like I said, took a deep dive into the Parks Tax Trust Fund with, at a, at a post-agenda for the listening public. We had a post-agenda hearing a couple of days ago with presence from the mayor's office and from the controller's office. And so folks can look that up online if they want to view that. Really good questions about how, I think, the consensus was that we need a Parks Plan. We need an overall long-term plan for our parks. And that, the good news is, the comprehensive plan that the city is undertaking through the Department of City Planning and our outreach through that will encapsulate a, a Parks Plan. And so that we're balancing everything from overall maintenance of our new and existing parks, our rehabs of our, our existing parks, like major rehabilitations, and consideration of new parks as it makes sense to do so, and balancing that with the needs and the desires of, of the public at large. You know, the devil's in the details and the question, there's still probably going to be questions and concerns and disagreements about how best to prioritize. But it sounds like, you know, having, getting to the point where we have an overall plan and perhaps an agreed-upon rubric or kind of equity score or scoring mechanism for kind of how we're doing and monitoring that and keeping that very transparent and public is a really good step in the right direction. So I'm, I'm optimistic in that. And, and having partnerships with, with those outside of the city of Pittsburgh who can really help us execute and leverage additional money to get this done, as we already are doing this year. I don't have any specific questions on the Parks Tax Trust Fund that I didn't already ask. Is there anything further that, that you would like to add or that you'd like to sort of make sure that we're, you know, anyone who wasn't able to tune into the other hearing is, as their attention is drawn to?
Director Vargas, I want to offer you an opportunity to speak first.
Sure. Yeah. I mean, I, I feel like the, I thought the hearing was great on Monday. That was a great opportunity to even hear where everybody was thinking about the Parks Tax. You know, from our perspective, and I think jointly, a couple of the important things that we're trying to do as it relates to the investments made by the Parks Tax is all about making sure that residents feel the difference and that the user experience is enhanced. As it relates to recreation side, you know, the more that we do bring on new assets, the more we're gonna have to program those spaces. And so having the ability to, to do that, so whether it's, you know, in aquatics, for example, Oliver Bathhouse, you know, is going to be opening up. You know, pretty soon, Thaddeus Stevens will be opening up. And we don't kind of have the ability to program those without thinking about, okay, like, how are we making sure that we're, we're able to be present and that the assets that we are maintaining, the parks that we are improving, that we're also able to be present there. So for us, that, that's, that's a big part of, you know, we're excited about moving into the future, is making sure that we're good partners and making sure that the user ultimately has a wonderful experience in our parks. The assets are wonderful. And, you know, this, this fund really does help to maintain that presence. And our hope is that people do recognize and see that and feel that when they are using our parks or our recreation facilities, which are zoned as parks because they are part of the, the experience in, in parks. Just to mention like our pools and our spray parks.
Yeah, I definitely second, you know, the, the maintenance, from our perspective, the maintenance and the programming go hand in hand. You know, the spaces are so much more wonderful when they're activated with the kinds of stuff that Catherine and her team brings every single day. And so in our discussions and in our partnership together, you know, we really want our activities on the maintenance front and the capital front to be the things that help enable, you know, those great experiences for residents and visitors to the city. I think, I think very salient points that I'd like to, that we all need to collectively think about as we continue to craft this plan of parks together that were raised on Monday, you know, technically, as a professional landscape architect, I agree that the assessment of walkability to parks is, was, I'll classify it as incomplete from when the Parks Tax Trust Fund was done. I think it overstates the walkability of our park system. And I think that that is a worthwhile place to begin, to, you know, really think about that, that commitment of a, of a reasonable walk for residents to their, their public park and looking at, you know, those opportunities and challenges therein, or different ways that we can, you know, begin to craft a plan that improves, you know, public accessibility of the parks. And walking being that activity that's navigating a public street is being that kind of common activity that would unite us all. I think that's a critical point. I think, again, based on our public, our works meeting budget hearing this morning, you know, as you and I have discussed, you know, the public restrooms, I think also are, you know, critically figuring out how we maintain, how we provide, how we can do that with the resources that we have. I think that's a critical benefit to users everywhere. It's like, you know, again, another one of those unique but shared human experiences. And so I think that, you know, keeping those top of mind, you know, just important for everybody who's a user of a park as we kind of, as we kind of grow and develop this planning process and, and how we expand our offerings of parks across the city.
Great. Thank you. Anything further you'd like to add?
Uh, no, I just, more staff.
More staff here, yeah.
That's all I'm gonna say.
So, I, so just to reiterate, what I see is, you know, the last thing we want to, well, just to reiterate, the, the maintenance and the programming, like building that in as a, not even contingency, but just as an additional expectation for, for, for spending for every new facility, every new, you know, every rehab, every sort of reopening. Because, yeah, the last thing you want is to reopen Oliver Bathhouse and not have programming or staff to be able to run it. Or the maintenance to make, you know, the last thing you want is, a year later, starting to see it degrade in really avoidable ways, just because the maintenance funding wasn't there for that. So it is going to be really important for us to have the funding for the actual project at hand and the long tail of programming and maintenance into the future. So that hopefully, you know, 20 years in the future, we're not having to do another expensive multimillion-dollar rehab. The maintenance has extended that out for much longer. And, you know, it's maybe minor rehabs that we have to do, much like our bridges and our other infrastructure as well. So you mentioned walkability, and I think that's so important. And it has to be a conversation as part of our larger plan with, you know, Domi and our other, and our city planning. But I also want to mention accessibility in the sense of, you know, welcome to everyone. And those who might be experiencing our parks and enjoying our parks with a wheelchair or needing an assist in the, in the restroom with adult-sized changing tables or different types of sensory play equipment can also think, know that some of our parks, and ideally eventually all of them, are welcoming spaces and, and knowing where they can go, like being fully transparent about where they can go to access which services at this point. Our office, I'll just do a little plug right now. Patsy Boone in our office has been running a project that is sort of a voluntary parks accessibility audit with residents from the city of Pittsburgh just going out to a nearby park, taking a little survey and submitting it. And we're tracking that. We're about, you know, a third or halfway done through our parks. And certainly, if we wanted to sort of really bolster this, we work with the Controller's Office and do an accessibility audit of, of our parks, with the idea being that it helps to guide future plans and that, you know, we can be fully transparent about what our parks have to offer. So someone doesn't have to say, meet someone who, you know, is visiting a park, using a wheelchair, doesn't get there and realize, oh, I can't actually get here because there's not a curb cut, or, oh, I can't actually pull up to the, the picnic table because the benches aren't movable, or whatever the issue might be. So being really transparent about what is available as well. Would love to see that. I don't have any further questions. Do we have anyone online? Okay, great. Any final comments or thoughts or anything you'd like to add?
I would like to make one kind of unrelated statement if possible.
Absolutely, yeah.
And I always enjoy hearing, you know, the Parks and Recs, you know, their budget hearing for their work. It's unbelievable. I would be remiss because it recently became to my attention. So I just wanted to provide some clarification for any children that might be watching, that Santa Claus is real. He actually works for Public Works. And that, you know, every year, the holidays, he's given leave to perform his Santa duties. He does, and I can confirm that he does have magical powers of access that I do not comprehend. But that I did want to confirm that he is actually real and that he is an employee of Public Works, you know, for any children that might be watching.
You heard it here, folks. Enough said. Case closed. Now we have to get to maybe hold a separate post-agenda on how he actually gets down the chimney. We've never actually figured that out. No definitive answer there.
Again, as I said, it's unbelievable. I can't comprehend it, but it, he does have magical powers of access, yes.
I don't think we can top that. So I will just leave it there. I really appreciate your time, your energy, the work that you all do, the work that your staff do is absolutely incredible. Thank you. Look forward to seeing what we can do with this Parks Tax Trust Fund that everyone's paying into every year. And with that, I will call for recess. Thank you all.